All right, I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. And have everybody, all the council people state their location. I'm Bruce Cantor, I am in Las Vegas, Nevada, in Clark County.
Don Medley, Satake, New York, Suffolk County.
Ian Ferguson, beautiful Lathard Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Okay, so we'll start out tonight with the first discussion item, which will probably take up the majority of the time, which is cannabis. We're talking about the scoring matrix and I will turn it over to Scott Baker to give an introduction and then we'll get into a lot of the questions that I know we have.
All right, so as I was starting to say when we were so rudely cut off last time. There haven't been, there hasn't been many substantial changes since the last time you've seen this, a couple of weeks ago. We did go through, kind of cleaned up the points and made it so that was a nice even 50 possible total points. And then, and then some of the other suggestions that were made at the last study session, we incorporated that. So yeah, well, at this point, I think it's probably best just to turn it over for questions and comments and we'll go from there.
Okay, well, I've got a lot of them, so I'll let you guys go first.
So I have a question. So I just want to make sure I'm looking that basically side street parking in a parking garage. So if you're talking 47 total points, you can make 30 points for parking, is that accurate?
Not entirely, so we did take out the parking deck, right? We had, that was one of the things we removed, but we did add, so we swapped them out. We swapped the parking deck for the side street parking. The side street parking is something that we have been discussing at the planning commission for probably actually longer in reality than I've been around here. That was originally discussed as part of the mitigation strategy for the Southfield Road reconstruction. And myself and Jill and Scott Wrangler, our city attorney. We have sat down with representatives from the road commission. We've identified, gosh, oh, like a dozen potential locations for these small side street parking lots. They're generally between six and eight parking spaces between the sidewalk and the, in an alley. And they are, like, I'm looking over here and then you moved on me, Don. So they're between the alley and the sidewalk and they would just fit right into that little right away. And they're meant to serve the properties within 500 feet of that particular, of that particular spot. So we have, the planning commission, Bruce, was that last, was that last year that we came up with the standards, the parking, the design standards? It may have been 2019.
Yeah, it might have been a couple of years ago, but, but definitely.
So we've got design standards for these already envisioned. We've already got the buy-in from the county, so we thought that that was a more appropriate parking ask, if you will, than the incredibly unfeasible parking deck.
And, and I agree with that, but when you look at the optional parking and then also the side street, somebody can earn 30 points for building parking spaces.
Parking's a big deal. I mean, we can.
Yes and no, I mean, the side street parking is identified as 10 out of the potential 50. I didn't, the additional site improvement points scale were not included in that total, that total 50 points. So those, and I guess when I was looking at it and I did this, I didn't, I didn't take that into consideration.
I didn't, I never took those site improvements into consideration either, honestly, when adding up that scoring criteria.
But we're saying 47 points is possible, but actually we have a scale that goes above 47. So we probably need to know what the total allowable point possibility could be. And then the other question I had about that is when you do the two points, energy efficient and wastewater recycling improvements. Five points for this, five points for, so just, you know, being the devil's advocate here and the details. If I put in a Nest thermostat at my house, that's considered energy efficient. Would that give me two points here? I mean, I just, I feel like the additional site improvements point scale lacks enough specificity that it could really lead us down a path there. You know, if somebody puts weather stripping on windows, is it per window that they get credit for that? And please know, I don't, I don't want to picket y'all, but I just think when we lack some of those really specific measures, we can get into a little trouble there when it becomes to the more optional things.
So I will say.
Question with, you know, the five points per low impact design feature, well, what's a definition of that, you know?
Yeah, that is. And that's something I will say that when we, we did, we kind of ran out of time putting this together last week in an effort to get it on tonight's agenda. We didn't have, we didn't all sit down after it was all completed to kind of go through this stuff. So yeah, these are, and unfortunately Jill doesn't appear to be here tonight, so these are pretty big. You're absolutely right, I mean, these need to be defined terms and I think there needs to be limits put on the amount of additional points that, that an applicant could receive. Because you're absolutely right, I mean, you could have someone claiming, you know, 10,000 points because they've done all these energy efficient, you know, check items. So that's something we definitely need to.
And Scott, I think we can accomplish that pretty, pretty easily if we say, as recognized by, you know, an energy efficient, as recognized by DTE consumers or something. You know, something that they would typically give credit for to a business. And, and then we're not getting into a really subjective notion there. I still am concerned, the opportunity exists for somebody to get 30 points for parking. And that, so I think that we could adjust that optional parking down. You know, I'm okay with the 10 for side street and Susie I think brought up a great point where, you know, planning and zoning has wanted that and we could leave the 10. But I think an additional 20 for that is a lot. And then the only other thing that I really kind of had question about, and I did mention it at the last meeting, but I didn't know if there was a reason it didn't go in. When we were talking about security and security plans and those types of things, there's nothing given here to someone hiring a security expert. Or, or that didn't really make it into this plan, and so I just kind of wanted to know why. Because again, I want to make sure with security that somebody who has a lot of expertise is creating that.
Well, we did talk about that and I guess what we came up with was how, what is an accredited security person? And, you know, what's the definition of that? Is it, is it someone that has taken an online class? Is it someone that has law enforcement background? Is it, you know, how do we define that? And then how do we verify that that individual is who they claim that they are? So.
I think if it was somebody that had a law enforcement background, like a minimum of, you know, five years. I mean, I think that you could define that in, you know, in a pretty standard fashion.
Yeah, I mean, you know, they have experts out there that have an FBI background of 30 plus years. And I think we've seen several individuals that actually came to many of our town halls that stated that. And I don't think that's, that's an unusual request to just have those details there.
I think when we were talking about it, it was just, you know, like for planning or for, you know, there's AICP, right? So there's, they have a certification that we can point to, you know, architects, you know, they've got their, they've got their license and their accreditation, same with, you know, engineers. So I, I don't think we're, I don't, I think that's where, I mean, that's where I was comparing things to, like, what kind of security, you know, how does a security firm do that?
Well, and I guess the thing I would say is we have in here active shooter workplace violence training. How are we rating that training and what standard are we using for that? So.
I don't think we're rating that though, we're just saying like, hey, is that something that is part of your plan? And if so, okay, then you get a point. Right, we're not evaluating how, how good their active shooter training is. I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't have any idea, obviously that would be something that the police are going to look at and evaluate. But, I mean, we're not evaluating it, like, in terms of scoring, it's just, is it there or is it not?
Well, I think if we have that in there, then I think Ian, a nice point regarding the fact that maybe we have someone who has previous law, that they have a consultant or an advisor who has, you know, law enforcement experience. I think that would be reasonable.
And going to your, your questions about like the building and the site. I guess I'm used to splitting the hairs. Building those, like the, the additional site improvements, that's the site, that's not the building, that's the property, right? Like, that's how I view it as, as from that planning, that planning end. Like, I looked at the, like, the building improvements that we've got, like, energy efficient, what, and energy efficient and water recycling building improvements. That would be something that is actually to the building. And the energy efficient, energy efficiency and wastewater recycling improvements under site, that would be for the site. So are you doing rain barrels, are you doing swales, are you doing something else, right? But I see what your point is, so I just want to make sure you, you kind of, sorry, I was splitting that hair, so, but making the definitions is fine.
I'll pause for now.
So I have a question, as long as we're in that section of additional site improvement point scale, I'm still a little confused. So, so we've got it set up so that there's a total of 50 points. And then we say additional site improvement point scale. So are we saying that in addition or above the 50 points? So let's say somebody does the substantial new construction and scores 15 points here. So now, will they score 65 points?
So that, that's the, that's the problem right now is that when I did these revisions and did the resolution, I didn't realize that. I thought that, because we didn't get a chance as a group to go through the points. Susie assigned the points and then sent it off to me to do the resolution. We didn't get an opportunity to go through and I just took her calculation of, it was 47 and then I changed it with, I put a cap on the number of points you could get for additional improvements for community benefit, I put it as a cap of three. I didn't go through at the end and realize that these, these additional site improvement points weren't figured into the total. So that, that needs to still be done, that, that's a big open end. Because we should have a defined number of maximum points. We shouldn't let, you know, to Dawn's point, an individual that comes in and, you know, all of their points, they may score on putting in energy efficient appliances or, you know, insulation and things like that. I think that's going to be, it's going to, potentially may skew the scoring. So we should allow for the ability to achieve these additional points, but put a limit on them. How many they can get, and same thing for building improvements as well. Those should be, you can get two points for building improvement and perhaps we'll give a maximum of, you know, six points for that as well, or something along those lines. So. Excuse me, unfortunately, right, this, as it is right now, I, I don't believe it's ready to go forward in this form. It definitely needs more work still.
I think we can work on it and we can make these corrections and we can still move forward with it tonight with, with the, with the resolution with corrections.
That's a pretty big with corrections. Obviously, it's council's decision, but I, but I think there's a lot of stuff that, this, this is a, this is a pretty big loophole that's open right now.
There's a special meeting scheduled for the 28th of October. That would give a good amount of time to work out these details, especially if we could get the draft revisions out next week. So we can get comments and move forward with it having on the agenda the 28th.
Yeah, that could.
As a suggestion, as a.
Um, so I had a bunch of.
Yeah, keep coming with the comments and questions, because we'll, like I said, hopefully Jill will be available at that next meeting too. Because I thought someone from her office was going to be here tonight.
So over, over on page nine of the document, section two, there's, talks about the full and complete copy of pre-qualification application materials. And we did get an email from Paula Givens, which seemed to make sense. And I wanted to get, which basically said, well, you know, by asking for the entire packet, you know, some of, some of our clients would be, would be sending in a stack of literally a five feet of paper. Given the amount of information that's required for the pre-qualification. So I didn't want to hear Scott's opinion on, on, you know, should we be changing any of that? You know, or, or, you know, was that a bottom, that comment has some bias to it, or, I mean, it seems to make sense on the surface. So what's your thoughts, Scott?
Yeah, no, I tend to, I tend to agree with that. And I'll pull that up real quick. I do think that's, that's a lot of information that that we don't necessarily need to go through and digest. And a lot of it may be repetitive and redundant with respect to what we've asked for in our, in our application already. So, yeah.
Certain specific things that you're looking for in that, or was it, was that more of just the, having the ability to look at their pre-qualification information to see if anything stood out?
I think that was, yeah, I think that was more so just, you know, this is what, what, we want to see everything that you've submitted to the state as well. Again, not that, that we necessarily have to go over what the state has gone over already. But, but I do tend to think that that, that is too much, potentially too much information.
So is that something you could, you could, you could rework in the, in the, the final version?
Yeah.
And Bruce, while we're in that section, can we also ask the point about insurance, about whether or not you should have to purchase insurance while you're applying?
Yeah, that was.
Good point.
Yeah, that, that seemed like a good point too, that was my next question.
Yeah, actually, all three of her points that she brought up were pretty good. The third one about the competitor analysis, that's something that we kind of debated and went around with. And then, I think, what do we have, Susie?
Changed it to a marketed, a market analysis.
Analysis, yeah.
Because we figured, you know, the snarky answer is, well, I'm better. That's my competitive analysis, they stink and I'm awesome. I mean, so we thought a marketing analysis would be better, more appropriate, give us more information.
And you mean a market analysis, not a marketing?
Yeah, market.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure, okay.
Yep, no, because marketing with a marketing analysis was elsewhere, we talked about in there, how they were going to market the, market it. That was in there at some point, but.
That's, that's also part of the business plan, I believe. We did leave that one in, because we wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, so, so with respect to insurance, then Scott, what do, what do we say? Do we say that, you know, you know, I think Ms. Given said something about, you know, having an affidavit in the, in the application that, that, you know, says, that stipulates that they'll be naming Lathard Village as insured prior, prior to, you know, their occupancy or, you know.
Yeah, and that, and that's, that would be a condition too. I mean, these are all going to, any, any applicant that gets, gets recommended and has to come back for city council for approval is going to be required to provide that, that proof of insurance. I think we can change that wording so that it's not required at the application point. But if, if you were to progress to the actual issuance of a license, you would, that would be required. And again, I don't really anticipate that that's going to be, I think most of these entities are going to have the appropriate level of insurance just for their own sake.
And they'll be insurable, so we shouldn't have.
Yeah, that's, yeah, insurable is a, is a key point there, yep.
All right, and just, just to be clear, like, like for the community benefits, you know, where we have 31, what was it, 30, yeah, 31 points max. So essentially, somebody could select to do all these things and get 31, 31 points, right?
Yeah, I believe that's, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure I was fully clear on that. And then on page 12, regarding the training programs. You know, where there's four different training programs that they can each get a point for. I guess the question then is how do we ensure that that's, that's done? You know, so, you know, I'm assuming that doesn't have to be done prior to them opening, or maybe it does. But either way, you know, what, what's the stipulation? What's the, you know, requirement there in terms of, you know, them proving to us that they've done it?
So, so this is going to be, I mean, we're, at this point, we're asking them to provide us with all the information of what they're going to do. You know, that can be said for every single one of these things. Because obviously, until they get, they get an approval, they're not going to make these improvements or they're not going to implement these training plans. But part of the, part of the licensing obligation is that if they are issued a license, they have to continue to adhere to all the prerequisites and qualifications. And if they don't, then that's a, excuse me, that's a basis for the city to issue, basically issue a show cause and have them come back before council and explain why their license shouldn't be revoked for failure to comply with, with the conditions that were required of the issuance of that license.
Right, well, I would think, I would think then what we'd want to have to have as part of the evaluator's checklist or something would be a list of all these things that, you know, have to be, have to be met, that aren't going to be met by the time, you know, that they open. So that somebody is going back and checking to make sure that this stuff is getting done.
Absolutely, and that, that's something that we're also working on right now and is it more so an internal document for the scorers so that they can score these documents and keep the notes and their tabulations in one form that's going to be utilized by everyone. Again, that consistency in the application of the scoring. Also, I anticipate that there'll probably be FOIA requests for, for the scorers' worksheets and what they, how they arrived at their conclusion. So having a uniform document that they, everyone can use, that will be, contain all that information, I think is very important as well.
Okay, on page 13, oh, sorry.
No, I yielded.
Oh, okay, um, page 13, the fourth bullet up from the bottom, it says, distance from the above is provided, property line to property line. I'm not sure what that's referring to.
It's talking about the distance from any facility to a proposed, from a park or any part of the buffer.
Your page numbers are different than mine.
Yeah.
Well, it's 13.
Well, there's a document, the document page number is 13, the packet page number is 14.
No, it's 13.
Yeah, but it's 14 on the packet.
I, I.
Can we make that a little clearer?
Yes, there may have been words that got deleted, because what we talked about, that's in reference to the survey, right? We had originally said that they need to provide us a scaled, basically a scaled map showing that their distance from any part of the buffer. And now, and so that just needs to be, now it needs to be a survey. And I probably deleted a few extra words trying to get this all right.
Yeah, and then.
What do you, sorry, wait, hold on, Bruce, what are you clarifying, Susie? Can you repeat that again?
So we had, in the last draft, we had said, there was two options you could get. It said, you want, we wanted a scaled, a scaled map showing the location of the proposed cannabis facility and where it is in relation to the, the buffer. And we took out the scale diagram and we said, we want, what we really want and what Bruce is asking for clarification from, that we really want a survey that defines where, where this proposed, where a proposed facility would be in regards to the buffer, not just a scaled diagram.
Okay, gotcha, all right.
I think I just accidentally deleted a few extra words.
Okay.
Then I had, well, additional site improvements, we talked about just defining those in a little bit more detail, so a little more clear. And then, again, both Paula Givens and, I can't remember his first name, Goldberg, or the email that they sent. They both mentioned something about the woman minority owned criteria that we had saying that 25% certification isn't available from the state, that it's 51% or more. So do we need to change the criteria there? Did you agree with those statements, Scott, or?
So I think there's, you're kind of lumped two separate comments into one. The Ms., was it Givens? Given, her, her comment was that the, the certification from the state is not, they would only be 51% or greater that they would, that they would certify. So we would have to rely upon some different form of certification to add our standard of 25%. That, I think that's, I mean, that could be, you know, we, we can make that evaluation ourselves if that, if, if council wanted to keep it at the 25%. Or we could increase that to the 51% and then we would, could rely on the, you know, the state of Michigan's certification. So that, that's kind of a discussion for council as to how, how they want that one to proceed. Mr. Goldberg's comments were more so, he had taken a position and he had cited a couple of cases that are basically saying minority points or preferences for minority based businesses or local businesses are a violation of due process and equal protection. Which I don't, I think that position is a bit of a stretch for our application. The cases that he cited, the individuals are receiving significantly more points or eligibility if they were an in-city business. In our particular case, I think the maximum that they would get is three points out of, potentially both going to be more than 50, but, and so, so it's not a significant number. I don't, I don't feel that give, granting those additional points for a local business would disproportionately impact any non-local businesses. And, and same thing with the women and minority owned business. I don't feel that those would disproportionately impact or disadvantage non-minority or non-woman owned applicant. They still have areas to earn just as many, if not more, points in other, in other areas on the scoring. So I, that part I wasn't as worried about, but I did agree again with Ms. Given's points about the, about changing the, how we, what our certification process is going to be, whether that be, you know, verifying through articles of organization or just an affidavit from the applicant that, that we would take at face value.
I think if, if we can't meet that criteria, because 51%, I think you're an affidavit or, you know, articles of incorporation, whatever they can provide that demonstrates that documentation. I think we should take and not make them hit a threshold of 51%.
Yeah, I agree, I think, I think the 25% is, is, again, I think that just goes further to support the position that it's not a, you know, a significantly disavantaging requirement.
I did have a question, so I'm going to take some of Bruce's time back. When, when we were talking, it says a charitable organization will benefit. And then we go on and so, but we don't outline how they will benefit. And so I think benefit is, is pretty subjective there. It says, a summary of the charitable organization's impact in the city shall be included. So I think we need, need to give it a little more specificity about how this organization will benefit, a charitable organization. And then, as you go on down, it says, the business will contribute to the city's tree replacement fund. If they give a dollar, does that count? I mean, you know, what, you know, what, what percentage are we asking? Are we asking for a half, half a percent of, you know, net revenue? Are we asking for a half a percent of gross sales? The same with the capital improvement fund. And so, you know, the, the business will commit to. to a, and maybe outline a percentage in, in those areas. I think that that would kind of shore up that language, Scott, and make it a little tighter.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm a little concerned, though, about having, you know, requiring a private business to commit a percentage of income to the city. I, I think that puts you on a dangerous path. Whereas if they're going to make a contribution, whether it be, you know, a donation, they'll plant a tree every year, or they'll put on an event, or, you know, donate, one of the things that is on the capital improvement plan, I think that's a a better way of putting it, as opposed to saying, you know, you're gonna be required to give us some of your profits.
Well, and I'm just offering up different, different things, but I'm, I'm saying right now, a business will contribute to the city's tree replacement fund, they buy one tree a year, that meets that goal for three points. You know, they will contribute annually to the city's capital improvement fund. You, you know, I, I think we might be better, I think we might be better served that the business will outline how they will contribute, or, you know, put the onus back on them.
Well, let me, can I jump in on that? So regard, this actually came up when we had the committee, so, and we actually benchmarked a couple of cities that didn't give specifications for applicants to adhere to. They basically just said, there was a statement that said, "What can you do for the city, or what contributions will you incorporate?" And they, in turn, went back and detailed that. So for us to kind of pigeonhole, I would agree with Scott. Let's open it up just a little bit as, as far as letting them come back with those ideas. And then, we can go from there.
Okay, well, that's, that's, that's why I liked Don, Don's idea as well. I, I think we should ask them to detail what they're gonna do, you know, for, for those things. So, so that way, when, when they put in their application that, you know, they're gonna plant fifteen trees, then we know they're gonna plant fifteen trees, and we've got something to evaluate them against, as opposed to saying, you know, just, it will, it'll contribute to the tree placement program. You know, so that way, if, if they outline what they're going to do, we can then hold them to it. And then as we're evaluating it, if somebody says, you know, "Oh, well, we're just gonna give a dollar to the capital improvement fund," well, we don't give them that point, because we don't think that's inadequate, you know, you know, inadequate community benefit.
Yeah, but I, I think we're saying the same thing in a roundabout way. Scott didn't wanna get the details in there, but at the same time, we're asking the applicant to be more specific.
No, I, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think what Scott is saying is he doesn't want us to ask for specific details, like five percent of profit, something like that. But I think it, it's okay if we let them detail what they're planning on doing.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think you and Ian are saying the same thing.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Yeah, we, we could have, put that burden back on them to identify what, what their contribution is going to be. And I think we could even, we could probably even go as far as to, not that I anticipate someone's gonna offer up a dollar towards the tree fund a year, but I think we could, you know, that it has to be more than just a nominal type of a contribution.
Yep.
Or just, I think what you said, Scott, outlining their plan for how they're gonna contribute and what they're going to do. I think, and, and Ian and Bruce both said it really well, let them outline it.
Yeah, and, you know, keep in mind, this is an extremely competitive process. I think these applicants are well aware, I mean, we're not the first city, again, benefit of not being the first city to do it, they, they know that they have to come forward with, with their, their best work product and their, their best offer, basically. So I, I, again, I don't anticipate that we're gonna see a whole lot of applicants that are coming in and saying, you know, "I'm gonna do the bare minimum." I think, I think, I'm hoping that we'll be impressed with what we get.
Yeah.
Okay, other, other questions that people have?
You stole all the questions, Bruce.
That's why I let you guys go first.
Actually scrolling down.
Anything, anything from you guys on cannabis?
No, I got a lot of notes, I should've used something other than a green pen, but,
Well, can, can we, I mean, what, what I would hope is that, you know, after hearing and discussing all these, these questions and issues, that we can get a, a draft relatively soon. Because what I don't want to happen is when we get to the special meeting on October twenty-eighth, that, you know, we, we, you know, start picking it apart then, and, and then don't have a, you know, because council's, council's goal is to complete this process. So if we could get it, I mean, is it possible, is it reasonable to get it by the end of the week, so that we can look at it in forward comments, and then, you know, be ready for the October twenty-eighth special meeting?
Yeah, I think so, I mean, honestly, we just ran out of time last week when we met. It was like a mad dash trying to, to get out before five o'clock, so, because everyone had other commitments. So we, we spent a couple hours on it. I think one more session like that, based on, you know, implementing the comments from this evening, and obviously the things that were, we picked up here, is gonna be more than sufficient to have this done, and as long as we can meet this week, which I think we can, I don't see that being a problem.
Yeah, I'd say, I, I don't wanna rush it, but I wanna make sure we get it right, and, but also, you know, meet council's goal of, of, you know, acting endless by the, by the end of our term, so.
I do wanna kind of give you guys, I know we talked about it, I mean, we have the survey up, right? So we still have great, a great response rate, I mean, we have thirty-four people have responded, which is disappointing, I, I would like to see more, but I had, generally, most of the comments in terms of additional projects, they really all focus on improving parks and rec facilities, making playground improvements, continuing to focus on the, on infrastructure improvements and making, and prioritizing police department improvements. So there, there's several comments in here about, you know, just not wanting cannabis. So, while I appreciate those comments, they don't quite fit into the capital, you know, the, the the capital improvements end of things with the, with the larger projects, physical projects. But generally, I just wanted to give you those, those highlights, I'll have a report for you guys at the twenty-eighth meeting, if that's what you would like.
Okay.
Okay, anything, anything else cannabis-related?
Just CIP-related. The, the, the responses on those thirty-four, was it more leaning towards more infrastructure or, or parks and rec? Or is it split right down the middle?
It's pretty much split, it's pretty much split, the, at the, they're, out of the gate, like, there was a lot for, a lot for parks and rec, and, and, and actually, I have a meeting set with a, a company later in this week that has provided, provided Chris a quote, so I'm following up on some of those other things. So there's, but I'd say overall, it's a pretty, a pretty good split. I mean, and I don't wanna say that, you know, make it sound like there wasn't other good suggestions, I mean, there's good things in there, they just don't all fit within the capital improvements thing, you know, like, wow, let's see, there, there's another.
So was there an outlier that did fit? That was maybe something to consider? Because it sounds like we just had like two categories there, did you have any outliers that said, "Oh, yeah, we had one person that came up with a really interesting idea that could, you know, we need to flash out."
Not, not totally, I mean, there's other things like, you know, make aesthetic improvements to Southfield Road. Okay, I, I mean, you know, or like, you know, like, the, people grooved on the banner and flower basket program, so like, continue to do something like that. You know, there was a lot of also emphasis on will improve the, improve the, the, the buildings on Southfield Road. Well, those aren't things that, those are great, and I would love to see those happen, but we don't have control of those private, of that private property, so that's, you know, they're good goals to strive towards, we'll continue to work for them, but they can't, it's not something that we can necessarily include in this kind of plan, that's, you know, so, good ideas, just not all, like I said, within that CIP box.
Yep, understood, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, so let's, let's move on to the next discussion item, which is this, this staff reorganization for the director of building department positions, I'll turn that over to Cheryl, I think.
Yes, thank you. And if you recall, we had already started some of the reorganization, and this in particular relates to the recreation position. And if you, from our last meeting, what we did was a part of the responsibilities, in particular for the special events, have been shifted to Cory Dahl, who is the DDA manager's special projects. So we are sharing the salary for that position with the DDA. So this is the second phase, because another part of the responsibilities that were Chris's, when he was here, was the maintenance of the building and grounds and things of that nature, and the safety, which became a component through the COVID crisis situation, and a requirement that we have someone dedicated to that. So what I am suggesting is that we now transition those specific responsibilities to the position that's currently code enforcement officer, because he's already working with the building department and facilities and the, the maintenance of the building and grounds, and upgrade that to being a director position. And the salary is already shared with the DDA. And this would not change the dollar amount that the DDA is contributing to the cost of the position. So this increase would be totally borne by the general fund from the recreation position, which would be seven thousand, yeah, but that still leaves the little over forty thousand in that position, so that we can make further decisions relative to how we're going to offer the recreation programming. And before you ask, we're already in conversation with Southfield in regards to that. And we have a meeting coming up with SMART, so that we can have a conversation in regards to how we can coordinate providing transportation to various programs that may be offered by the city of Southfield, whether their facilities and program sites or with the Lathan Village site, so we're moving forward with those as well.
Yeah, that makes sense, you know, and then the, the, the maintenance position that you just highlighted, that gives that person an opportunity to grow within that, that space and, and learn more. Just put more under his belt, his or her belt, so. And if it's just a wash as far as no increase, no salary hit against the city, I, I think it's a, it's a win-win there.
Yeah, I agree, I think it makes sense, but as, as the person who spent several years, you know, trying to get code enforcement brought back in-house and, you know, get us to a full-time position, I just have one question. And, and that's, so he's going to be taking on extra responsibilities. So what, what I wanna know is, is, is there an estimate of, you know, how many less hours of code enforcement will we have because of it? So obviously, if he's gonna be doing some maintenance tasks, you know, he's not gonna be able to spend quite as much time on code enforcement, which is probably okay, but are we talking, you know, a loss of a few hours a week, are we talking a loss of ten hours a week, you know, how, how does that, how does that fall?
It hasn't really been a loss in terms of the code enforcement, because there was always, I guess, administrative tasks associated with the position. What happens with those administrative tasks have changed more than anything. So he was already doing things related to the building department and supporting with the permits and coordinating those efforts. Already working on policies and practices relative to the building department and how we are trying to upgrade and get those fine-tuned, I guess you would say. So some of these things were already happening, and he's been doing it without any real impact on the code enforcement. And we still have Kelda as backup for code enforcement, especially when he's not there or just isn't able to do all of those services. So we're trying to get as many people cross-trained as we can, so that we're not fully dependent on one person to do any, everything. So it's, it's been working well, he's already been doing it. And so I, I don't think it's really gonna have a negative impact on the code enforcement, because we all recognize that is a priority.
Yeah, so what I'm hearing is not, is not significant.
Correct. And, and I, I would make an assumption, and I wanna make sure this is accurate, that when we didn't have code enforcement, there was kind of a catch-up or a lot, or, I mean, there was a lot more time in the field perhaps. And so now it's more of a maintenance or dealing with reports or violations, but we don't have a backlog where we need to survey, is that accurate, Cheryl?
That's fairly accurate, and Bruce has done a lot of walking, so we can tell those reports. And the click, fix, a lot of people are starting to use that as building up significantly. So we have a process in place that helps to automate some of that, and people now know, in businesses, that we are doing code enforcement. So more than anything, there's a self-monitoring, because they understand that they're going to be contacted.
Okay, anybody, anybody else with questions on, on this?
I just, I had one quick question on it, and, and just maybe a suggestion more so than anything, but given that it's a new director position, Cheryl, any thoughts on, on opening it up? Obviously, not only for internal applicants, but opening up for external applicants, just to see what, if any, interest and qualifications that the city might attract with this new higher-paying position?
At mute, sorry. That, that's a thought, if I didn't think that the incumbent was likely to prevail in getting the appointment, I probably would open it up, or if I thought they weren't qualified. So everyone in a new position is given essentially an interim for the first three months, and we do an evaluation. And so if it should not work out, then we would definitely look at what are the other alternatives, or even look at reassigning the position in a different way, if it wasn't a good fit that was working out, so there's always flexibility in it.
Okay, I just, I, again, just wanted to throw that out there, just because it is, it went from a part-time code enforcement to a director, a department director position, so.
Well, I actually went from a full-time to a director.
Well, it started,
Initially started out as part-time, then it went,
Then went to full-time, and then went to, yeah, so.
Right, and it's not dissimilar to what we did with the DDA manager, who started as an intern essentially, or with even Suzy's position as the director. So there is precedent.
I'd just like to just throw it out there.
While, while I understand there's precedent, Cheryl, and, and I do wanna be really careful and, and kind of honor and, and weigh what Scott is saying. When there are times that positions are created or that they evolve, it is sometimes nice to open up those searches, because where someone may not have applied for a part-time position, or they may not have applied for a lower-level position, this might actually be something they might wanna be interested in. And historically, folks who have been attempting to break into certain positions have been disadvantaged when there isn't an open search process. And so I, I think it is just good that, that we have justification and reasoning for not doing that, if we don't open it up and, and create an open applicant situation.
I definitely understand that, but I also, one of the realities right now is a very strange job market. And you may get a lot of applications, but most of them are not from qualified candidates, so it's extremely difficult and challenging to get people who truly have the experience that we're looking for for any of, any of the positions that we are trying to fill at any time. It's a, it's an unusual job market right now.
One more pushback against that, one more pushback is, how many director-level positions in this realm have we posted in the last two years?
Not a director level, but the deputy finance position, deputy treasurer position. And we have not been able to fill that.
That's, but I think that's a really different skill set. I mean, I'll, I'll defer to you as, as the expert, but I think Scott's bringing up some really good points about why we might wanna consider a search.
Yeah, and I, I don't necessarily disagree with you, Don, the one, the one thing, though, like, feels a little different about this to me in some way, is, is that it also feels like, you know, in some way, this is, this is a promotion with the, basically the, the same job, just getting a little bit more responsibility that's been split off from somewhere else, so it, it, it justifies the, the director title, but it really feels to me, it it justifies the the director title, but it really feels to me, you know, also, you know, just as much as a promotion as it is us creating a new job. So.
And I think that framing is 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 really helpful.
Yeah.
I think the evaluation period is is valid. So you can see if the person actually will fit nicely in the position. And if he or she doesn't, then Dr. Mitchell has the ability to assess it after several months and then go from there. One quick question regarding the deputy finance person. Is it that we can't find a qualified person? Or is it just that we just haven't had many applicants or no applicants at all?
Oh, we've had plenty of applicants. None that were remotely qualified, basically. There were a few that were qualified and we even extended offers to two, and they accepted other positions. So it's just extremely challenging. So one, trying to create promotional opportunities within. And two, quite frankly, our salaries are not competitive enough to attract the talent that we really want to have.
I was gonna ask you that.
So creating these promotional opportunities, one, help to keep the talent that we've invested in, but also gives them at least some recognition of their skill set in a title, even if it's not in the compensation.
Yeah. So how far off are we on the competitive competitive salary? Is it way off, or is it on the very low end, or is it pretty close?
Let me
I mean, you don't have to give numbers just on the scale. I mean, we're just, we're trying to understand, you know, what the gaps are. And if we can meet, if we can help fix the gap, then we should assess it. So how far off are we?
That that might be something that might be worthwhile, taking up kind of as an overall comprehensive to really look at, you know, how our city salaries are competitive, you know, across the board.
Well, and we have this, before I even came on board, the city had taken the survey through the MML relative to the salary and just job descriptions. So we did make that adjustment. I think it was two years ago. So the only exception at this point would be this is essentially a position that was not considered at that time in doing that evaluation.
Yep. All right. We could talk about salaries later, if you'd like.
And I just want to note, there was a comment that we definitely want to capitalize on the investments that we made in the existing staff and and that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
And save taxpayer dollars in the process.
Yep. I think you were covering that. And I I think someone asked the question in the chat. So.
Yeah. Yep. Okay, let's let's move on to the next item, which is Indigenous Peoples' Day. I guess that's going to be Cheryl as well. You're on mute, Cheryl.
Okay, I want to remind you at 6:30 also. But
Isn't the next the next meeting until seven, though, right?
Okay, all right. Lower. Okay. For the Indigenous Peoples' Day, I think it was two years ago, that council passed the resolution, 2018. They passed the resolution to recognize Indigenous People's Day versus Columbus Day. But at that point, we didn't really discuss if you want, if it was your intention to make that a city holiday. And I know that Southfield is and a number of places, including banks and credit unions are closed. So as we're trying to make the calendar for next year, I just wanted some direction from council on if you wanted Indigenous People's Day, the first Monday of October, to be recognized as a city holiday.
So open discussion, I think in passing, we just vaguely talked about making it a holiday, but it wasn't any, you know, concrete discussions. I know we we had the resolution and that was it, but I think it should be a holiday.
Was 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 Columbus Day considered a a city holiday?
Not in Letherton Village.
Okay, in Southfield, but not Letherton.
Yes.
Do they have a different holiday that they don't take in Southfield?
Not that I'm aware of. Usually, it's Columbus Day and Presidents' Day were the ones that, you know, through union negotiations, you either had them or you didn't have them. But I don't recall them not having Columbus Day.
Right.
So Cheryl, I think there's capacity and desire for this. I think what might be helpful is to know how do we compare with other municipalities in the number and and the particular holidays that we're offering to our employees? And maybe if we could, you know, see that and make a decision there. And then the other side of that is does the possibility exist, you know, for for someone to designate a floating holiday as opposed to, you know, I I just, I'd like to see what what others are doing in this and making that.
Yeah, can we see that for the 18th, maybe, Cheryl? Or I'm sorry, the 28th?
28th, yeah.
Okay.
And and I and I do think there's appetite for this, Cheryl. I just I just want to know, but thank you.
So we've already benchmarked Southfield. So let's see what Berkeley's doing. And I believe they have both of those holidays in place.
That's a great idea, though, to see what else, what other cities are doing.
Yep.
Hey, Salim, as long as you're here, can you state your your location?
Oh, yes. Slim City, Letherton Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to mayor and council comments. Any council comments from from anyone?
Yeah, I have one. So and and I submitted a C-click Fix a couple of months back. It's regarding, and I don't think it's classified as a culvert, but the culvert that's directly across the street from the troops' house. So we know that's Michigan versus property, right? So we know there is a ditch or a pool of water that's collecting in front there. I don't think it's a culvert. I believe it's just an indentation that should have been resolved a couple of years back. Need to find out if that's actually the responsibility of Michigan first or the city of Letherton Village. And we need to resolve that quickly, because it's been out there for a while.
Is it is it on is it on Red River?
Yes, it is. It's right on Red River, directly across the street, actually.
And it's on the road itself?
Yes, it is on the road itself.
Yeah, then my guess is it's probably our responsibility, not 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 Michigan first.
Okay, so can we get someone to assess that? Because I'm not sure if it's a culvert, to be honest. That actually used to be a driveway.
Are you I guess I'm a little confused. Are you saying that the water is pooling on the road?
No, it's pooling on the side of the road that appears to be a culvert, but it's not an official culvert. It's
Okay.
It's gouged.
It's a low, low-lying area.
It's a low-lying area that's starting to become a culvert, when in fact it isn't.
So you said you submitted it on the the thing. Could we maybe have Cheryl follow up and see what the the resolution was or what they found out?
Yeah, I would appreciate that, Cheryl.
Yeah, I think I've I've seen that one come across, and I referred it to this city engineer, Scott Wrangler. So I'll let you know, he'll have to get someone out there to take a look at and try to figure out what's the problem and who's responsible for the resolution.
Okay, no problem. It may it may have an issue to do with a buried line somewhere, because I recall there was an issue there. That's why some of the trees aren't planted strategically. They had to accommodate either a buried line or something to that effect. So hopefully, we can get some resolution there.
Okay.
Thanks.
Don, Salim, anything?
All right, I got I got a few. Just a few few status items. Just wanted to check, you know, I brought up at the last meeting about potentially raising the curb on the entrance to on the westbound entrance on a 696 off of 11 Mile. Did we heard if you had a chance, Cheryl, or have we heard anything from the road commission about the possibility of doing that?
Not on that one, and it's not ringing a bell. So we'll have to talk on offline a little bit more about that one.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, and then, so I I'm guessing that Rami, so I know we had talked about having Rami start, you know, doing a little bit more assessing of of culverts and ditches, especially in the 19 miles that were were not going to be repaving. And so we talked about, you know, getting him trained up on on, you know, kind of picking off the low-hanging fruit. Have we have we started doing that with him yet? Or?
Actually, we received a communication from Scott Wrangler, and he wanted to do a different approach, because he didn't want individuals doing the clearance of their ditches in particular, because of the sloping and angle, that it needed to be more of an area project. So he wanted to approach it in a different way and possibly even looking at the special assessments to get those done if necessary. But to do individual houses did not seem to make sense, because there is a it's an area that has to be continuous for the flow.
All right. Well, let me let me I'll I'll add that to our infrastructure committee.
Okay.
Because, you know, while I agree with that statement, I also disagree with that statement. So, you know, you have you have issues where, you know, again, the the across the street, you know, on on my house is a is a classic example, where the ditch system works perfectly. The problem is, is the last house before the storm drain has a big root in there, so it causes the ditch to back up all the way down the street. And that would be that would be, you know, more of a a simple low-hanging fruit like I'm talking about. But I'll I'll add it to to our our meeting on the 4th, I think it is, of November.
Yeah, and it might be helpful to look at it more holistically and say which ones make sense for an individual to address and which needs to be part of a systemic approach to it.
Yeah, yeah. So all right, I'll I'll add that as a discussion item. And then, and a related note, I noticed in the in the in Rami's report for for this month, there were two instances where residents were caught filling in their ditches. And one, I just want to make sure that we're we're following up. I assume he is, but just want to make sure we're following up. I know he's told them, one of them, I think he said he's told them twice to get the, you know, to get the dirt out of there. But the but the one one thing I saw in the report that that kind of struck a chord, I think it was with 18 318 Rainbow. You know, he he talked about, you know, the resident had filled in the ditch, but the resident told him he was going to build a channel so that the water would flow. I just want to make sure that if something like that is happening, our engineers are involved. I mean, a resident doesn't get to just, you know, build build the say they're building a channel and and, you know, they're they're done, and they get to do what they want to do. I mean, it's got to be done appropriately. There probably should have been a permit pulled. But I want to make sure that that that's happening in that particular instance, because it was a little irksome reading, reading the report. And again, Ronnie probably was doing all this, but I just wanted to put my two cents in there.
Okay.
So, oh, quick question, Bruce. Maybe Cheryl can answer this. So if we see residents filling in their their culverts, is there any kind of fine or anything like that after we give a warning?
Well, I think I think Rami can cite them for code violation. Yeah, I think that I think that's the stick.
Okay.
And and probably, Scott, you correctly run wrong, you can keep doing that until they until they, you know, pull the pull the the dirt out of the ditches and restore it back to its original condition.
Yeah, there there would that would be generally with a citation that the corrective action would either be done by the resident or cited individual, or the city would get an order to do that corrective action and then assess the cost back onto the property.
Okay. Thank you.
And then and then the last thing I had, you know, while I was out canvassing last or, yeah, last week, last weekend, I, as I've done a lot, it's come across our officers, and I was chatting with one of them, and I was actually pretty surprised, you know, he had indicated that, you know, he had had a couple stops where he had you know, stop people who had warrants, but but we end up letting them go, because, you know, the the because we don't have a holding cell in the the other, the other jurisdiction, you know, couldn't come get them immediately or in the near future. So they just tell them to let them go. So I guess one one thought, I know we've we have been talking about, you know, a police department overhaul. We we did this, the at least an initial study, you know, to to build out a more proper police department. But it just it just just got me thinking whether or not there's a possibility. I mean, maybe maybe they they looked at this in terms of like, just adding a holding cell. So in these kinds of situations, you know, the right thing is done. And again, I don't know if that's a possibility. It probably would mean we'd have to have staff and you know, other amenities around that, which would probably be just one step shy of the whole, you know, redoing of the police department. But I it was just a thought, so.
Yeah, and I don't know if you wanted a response today, and I can't tell if Chief McKee is on the Zoom call with us. I know you had difficulty signing on. But one, you know, redesigning the space that meets the current requirements for a holding cell. And two, the staff that would probably be required to monitor it would make it a little bit cost prohibitive.
That's what I figured, but
May need to take a look at how best to utilize the services that we have with Berkeley relative to the the hotel space that they provide for visitors and how to best transport them. Because I know everybody's short-staffed and can't really don't have a lot of time to have officers, not on patrol.
Right. And then, you know, obviously, if we transfer them to Berkeley, then we're charged on a per-day basis for, you know, for, you know, so as long as that other jurisdiction takes to get there, we end up eating that cost. So
Right.
But it was it was just it was just surprising, like, oh, my God, we just caught two two people with warrants and we're letting them go. But I mean, I guess it's probably normal.
I say unfortunately, that's pretty common, especially when it's on the other jurisdiction to come pick up their prisoner. Yeah. You know, we'll hold them for a reasonable amount of time, but we we certainly wouldn't overnight lodge them on a warrant pickup. And and I could tell you, just you'd be amazed, Bruce, how many, even when we have them at the court, you know, hey, certain cities south of us, do you want to come pick up this individual with multiple warrants in your community? No, I'm sorry, we're we'll just advise and release. Okay. So, you know, it it happens a lot. And you know, it just is, it kind of is what it is.
All right, any other comments? If not, I'll they can open it up to public comment?
Yeah, quick, quick question regarding San Rosa. So San Rosa is pretty dug up when it comes to, I think, water main, I think, maybe on the on both sides of the street. So my concern is that you know, we're getting close to leaf pickup, we're getting close to colder weather, and the entire street is like it's like a bombed-out street, to be honest. Is there a plan to actually get the street close to operational?
Yeah.
Prior to, because it's you've you've been down that street. Half of it is blocked off. And it's just, it's a nightmare right now.
Yeah. So so the 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 plan is is, well, for starters, the the overall plan is that they'll be repaved, both both San Rosa and Willshire. Willshire is in a little bit a little better shape right now than San Rosa, but the 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 plan is is that those will both be repaved next next summer. But, excuse me, in the in the interim, they're supposed to be putting down a, you know, a thin asphalt coat over the over the the dirt for the where the water mains were were replaced. I mean, that the the hope was that we would be able to repave them this year, but the timing didn't work out. We knew that that was a very strong possibility, and it'll be the the same thing when we do the water main on on Golden Gate next year, from 11 Mile to South Hill Road. You know, we were hoping that, you know, we'll be able to repave it next summer or next fall. But again, it's all going to depend on the timing of the the road project. You know, it's just too expensive to bring them all back again. You know, the mobilization charges would just be huge. So yeah, so the idea is to put down temporary asphalt so that they can get through the winter and and go from there.
I understand. They're filling with sand now, so I'll let the neighbors know, because they they don't have any timing on it. And the and the weather's really not, you know, acceptable right now. So, okay, appreciate that.
All right, if there's nothing else, then I will open it up for public comment on any topics. Individuals are limited to three minutes, and we'll go ahead and open up the session.
Mr. Luckett has a question. Mr. Lucky, you're able to speak?
I am. Thank you. My name is Howard Lockoff. I'm at 29777 Telegraph Road in Southfield. I am the CEO of New Standard, which is a vertically integrated cannabis company wholly owned and operated by Michigan residents. We currently operate eight dispensaries in Michigan and have served in several others in development. We currently operate eight dispensaries in Michigan and have served in several others in development. We pride ourselves in the design and operation of our facilities and we work hard to be a valued member of the business community and the communities generally in which we, we operate. I'm also a commercial real estate attorney in a practice in both private and as in-house counsel for a significant area business and development team. We have undertaken due diligence and planning for a proposed provisioning center in Lathrow Village and are looking forward to pursuing a licensing, assuming the city adopts an ordinance allowing us to proceed. As you probably know, the marijuana licensing field has become a hotbed of litigation because of challenges to the process, the scoring rubric and decision-making in many communities. We are not litigious, but our projects have been delayed because of lawsuits filed by disappointed bidders. We received a perfect score in one community and we ultimately did not because, get a license because before the licenses were issued, there was litigation which we did not participate in. We were recently awarded a provisioning, provisional license facility, facility in another city. And when that city, that license was given, uh, the city was immediately sued by disappointed bidders challenging the scoring rubric. While we are not parties to that lawsuit, our project will undoubtedly be delayed and impacted by the litigation. We believe in succeeding on the merits of our plans and if we do not succeed, hope that the processes scoring rubric are immune from successful attacks. Here we have some significant concerns about the city's proposed scoring rubric. The lion's share of the achievable points all relate to community benefits rather than dealing with the actual cannabis operations and business, such as the strength and business experience of the operator, the nature and design of the facility, and improvements associated with the new business and other key components to a successful business operation. We absolutely believe and support community benefits and the communities in which we operate will support and confirm our commitment to the communities. But the rubric here is, appears to be entirely subjective and it could easily be construed that the licenses go to whoever pays the most money. To achieve the most points, one has to contribute to a charity, to a tree fund and to a capital fund, none of which has anything to do with the proposed business. For example, how much do you have to contribute to a tree fund to achieve the three points? Five hundred dollars, one thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars? Or is it just based upon who contributes the most money? The requirement that there be a side street parking lot which provides the single largest number of points is vague and may not even be applicable to properties in the city on which such a use would be permissible. It is one thing to ensure that employees receive a fair wage for working in the business, which we support, but another to require that twenty-five percent of the businesses be owned by a city resident. There may not be city residents with the background or experience in the cannabis business and the requirement seems to achieve no purpose other than enriching somebody who's not otherwise qualified. I'm only giving you these examples, not because.
Mr. Lockoff, you, your time is up, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other, other people who, who'd like to speak?
Mayor Pro Tim, there are no hands, other hands raised at this time.
Okay. Uh, all right, so I think that is it for the agenda. We reconvene at seven PM with, as the zoning board of appeals. And, um, yeah, so, uh, I will, I guess I'll go ahead and adjourn this and we'll meet back up in, I don't know how many minutes, about ten minutes.
We have a different log on for that one, right?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thanks for your time, everyone.
Do you stay on for one minute? I want to ask you one question about the ZBA meeting that's coming up.
Sure.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks, everybody.
ZBA.
Hi, yeah.
Bye now.
And I believe Kelly needs to stay on because she's the host of the meeting.
Okay.
Bruce, should I address this down?
Scott Baker.
Okay, yeah, see you in a bit.
Or actually, Scott, I could just call you. Okay, all right, thanks, guys.